So we'll figure this out now. We haven't thought about it yet because it hasn't happened yet.
Right, right, right. Understood.
Great. Well, happy to do that. It's probably useful to think about where we actually want people to park so that they don't ruin our lawn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is actually very helpful.
Yeah. Can I just ask a clarification?
Sure.
So the 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 house is five bedrooms, right? The primary residence is five bedrooms.
Yes.
Is there a separate space that you're gonna plan to rent? I'm thinking, sorry, it's small, so I was.
Yeah. So we haven't figured it out yet in terms of, this is a garage with an office space above it.
Above, okay.
This is the old house.
Right.
This is the addition.
Right.
And there are two bedrooms upstairs here and three bedrooms upstairs in there.
Right.
There's a ground floor bedroom, which is probably where we, which is kind of in the back of the room, which is where we would probably stay.
Oh, you would stay?
Yes.
Okay.
In this addition.
In the addition?
Yes.
And then just out of, I guess the reason I'm asking this is just to clarify within our board also, is there a distinction between parking spaces required for the rental unit versus the primary residence? Or is it just, it's a one-to-one?
I mean, I think if you're gonna call it, it's an occupied tourist home, right? So the home would have two parking spaces and then the rent, the rooms available for.
But those we can park in the garage, right?
That's right.
Those we can use our garage for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So what I would do is just say, I would just show the, if you have five, five maximum rentals,
Yeah.
right, that you would just show five spaces outside.
Correct.
And they're nine by eighteen, as I had said, just to show them outside. I think it's better to reserve the garage. I don't think it's terribly practical that you would really want them in the garage.
Five spaces.
Yeah.
Five nine by eighteen spaces.
Five nine by eighteen spaces.
It sounds like it's not even enough for your family, so it sounds like you'll be, you'll have to figure it out.
It's actually very useful to figure out. Fortunately, we're near the train, which is.
Right.
But it's very useful to.
You don't get nearer the train than that.
No. Our grandsons think it's the most exciting thing ever, determine if it's a Metro West, a Metro North, or an Amtrak.
Oh, which track, which train's coming through?
Which train, yes. It's a two-year-old boy thing. But we need to sort of figure this out before we have it graded. We will do that. Anything else you would like us?
No, so I mean, you would just, you, I'll send you, do we have your email? I'll show you how you just do a parking table. This will just be, you know, one row, which is basically five rooms for rent, one for space, or probably two rows. Then just say for their, for their residential house.
Yeah.
Right, whatever is the residential house, right?
Yeah.
There are two spaces that are required in, you know, for an R1 house. So I would just say that you have, you know, the three in the garage.
Yeah.
Right, which is plenty for the house and then the five for the five potential rooms for rent.
Okay.
And it's an allowed use. Our change, our code requires that we hold a public hearing for any change of use. So we have to do neighbor notification. So probably the best thing to do is schedule another meeting for next time. I don't know, are you gonna hurry or?
We, in order to do this, we have a conservation easement with Scenic Hudson. So in order to be allowed to do this, we need to first get village approval and then we have to submit the proposal to them. So the sooner, they need to approve kind of anything we do.
Right, right, yeah, no, I, we review the easement, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so let's do one more meet, because we just have, we don't really have what we need to see right now. I don't think we can schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
Do you?
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah. So in two weeks, we need every couple of months.
Great. We will email that to you.
And then I'll shoot you a.
Jeff has my email. If you could just tell me what format it should be to make sure I get it right.
Right. Just blow it up so we can, just blow up that one section.
Yeah.
Just so we can, just so we can see and just label it, you know, for what you're showing us, that it's a section of a site plan.
Correct.
It does not have to be to scale. But obviously, you want, you, you kind of want it to scale to show the nine by eighteen spaces.
Yeah.
Those are very large parking spaces, but that's what our code requires. But you've got plenty of room for that and it'll probably be.
Will not be a problem.
Yeah.
You can park a hundred cars there without a problem, so it will not be a problem.
So show that and then, and then at the next meeting, we'll figure out what the neighbor notification is. It's a bit odd because they're so far away. I'm not sure who really needs to be notified. You know, we have, you know, it's typically referred to as a blast zone, right? You basically let your neighbors know that something's going on. You post, you post, now we have a sign that gets posted, which I guess would be somewhere at the end of the driveway. Otherwise, nobody'd see, you'd be the only ones that would see it.
The only thing is at the end, the boulevard into their property entrance, that's probably.
As I said, yeah, yeah. Otherwise, they'd be the only people seeing it.
And if they have that place, maybe nobody sees it.
Yeah, I think that's the best you can do that. I mean, if people are back there and concerned, then they'll see the sign.
Yeah. Our closest neighbor, who kind of is nearest our driveway, we've kind of already sort of talked to her because she would see people driving down the driveway.
Yeah, I guess that's a good point. Those are probably the most impacted. I don't know how much.
Ava and Bob live.
Right here at the, this, this.
Yes, exactly. And number one. And Ava and Bob had some concerns and we have sort of, you know, talked to them and involved them and let them know because they, you know, wanna be reassured that there's not 20 million trucks driving down the driveways. There's not going to be, this is gonna be, I mean, our personal use will probably make more noise than, than this well. But we have, so they are the people that I think it would be nice to notify because we wanna make sure that.
How about the, the ones over here?
Well, the condo people, I mean.
They are, you know, if, if you say the proximity, that's probably the corner.
But there's the road between them?
Yeah, the road over, over here.
And there's woods here, the condo people are not affected, yeah.
The driveway is 200 yards long.
Right. Yeah, so we'll look, we can look at this at the next meeting just to figure out where the blast zone is. I'll take a look at the tax map. I'm not really, I, I'm not really kind of able to make it out on this.
Sure.
Is there a time in advance for our next meeting that we need the drawings or just like a?
No, because we'll review them then, yeah. It would be, it would be good to get them in by Friday next week if you can.
Yeah.
And that, we will have them a few days before the meeting and then we know that we can put you on the agenda.
Correct. We have them to do that.
And then I'll shoot you just a sample of the parking table. It really is just going to be a couple of rows, which is gonna be,
Okay.
you know, an R1 house, requires two spaces, you know, a tourist home.
I thought we were in a R3 zone.
Well, it's a residential house, right?
Oh, that's what that means.
Residential, R3 is for multifamily, right? Or for developments or condominiums, things like that.
Right.
Right. So the, if we're saying that, you know, it's kind of an occupied tourist home, I think you would say kind of two for the owners and one per, you know, and one per rental room, I think is, is, is more than enough. I think that, you know, but short of that, then you run the risk of, oh, there's, you know, there, there, the cars are overflowing. If they overflow, they're gonna overflow on your property anyway, so it really isn't as impactful as most of the other stuff we see in the villages, you know, is, overflows on, you know, we're chink to jowl.
There's 200 yards of driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
And the driveway is wide enough to park cars all along it, so.
Yeah, yeah. So I think in, you know, and if, look, if you wanna show it on the driveway, then it's perfectly fine too. I mean, but I imagine you probably do want some spaces up towards the property.
No, I, I think we legitimately wanna plan out where we want people to park because otherwise people park on your lawn and grow in it. So we need to think about this at some point, so why not now?
Okay, great. All right, great. And then are we required to notify Scenic Hudson? We probably should since there's a conservation easement. So we'll, we'll have you notify them as well.
They, they, at their, at our annual review, we mentioned that we were going through the process and said we would first get village approval and so they know. And Sarah.
And they don't have any, they don't have any issue with the, with the R3 use? Do they, the tourist home use?
No, they don't have any issue. They just want, their board reviews.
Right.
Anything that we do, they review.
Yeah, no, no, they have to hold the easement.
So the way the easement is written is that we are allowed to have a bed and breakfast or tourist rentals subject to Scenic Hudson's approval. That's how it's written. And so we mentioned it to them, said we'd first get village approval and then once we had village approval, we would, you know.
I guess, and also too, if you could bring, if you could bring a copy of the filed conservation easement?
The village has a copy.
Do we have a copy?
Because of the whole business with, we had to go through CCRB and the whole historic district review board. And so I brought many, if you want another copy of the conservation easement.
The boards are, the boards are all separate. I mean, yeah, anything that's gone to another board is not.
Yeah, I'll check the HDRB and the ZBA file.
Yeah, just so we have the right language, because I'm sure we're, we probably should notify the correct party, Scenic Hudson, to say we're gonna hold a public hearing on this. If they want to attend and get any comment, you know, I would think it would be in support, but everybody.
The way they seem to say it is that they perceive it as two separate things and they want the right to review the process independently after we got village approval. That's how they.
Yeah, that's why I'd like to read it.
Okay, great.
Do we have anything else?
So are we gonna?
Well, sorry. The conservation easement doesn't say that. The conservation easement says that we are allowed to have a bed and breakfast tourist rental subject to Scenic Hudson's approval. The letter we received from the person who does our yearly conservation easement assessment went into greater detail. Would you like us to forward a copy of that to you?
That'd be great, yeah, just to hear what they know. Because in that way then we'll just, I guess, I mean, look, we, we don't, I don't think we need, we'll all speak to the attorney. I don't think we need to condition our approval on anything because ultimately, we're approving it based on our code, whether or not it's compliant with the, and the village is not a party to the easement, are they?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so. I think it's just filed just by Scenic Hudson.
Correct. No, I, just between us and them.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, so we should just look at it just to figure out. And I think all we'll just do is just say, hey, we're holding a public hearing, just an FYI. And what that'll be is, at the next meeting, we'll decide, you know, who, what the, who gets notified. Basically, it's a certified return receipt, just notice. The lawyer drafts up a legal notice, which says, okay, you know, on such and such a date, we're gonna hold a hearing for a change of use. All change of uses have to have a public hearing for, in code spring code. It allows people to come in and comment, you know, if they can, they can raise concerns. It's a, it's an as of right use, right? But still, you know, the, the, you know, the body politic has to kind of be heard on any changes of use, so.
No problem. Sounds great.
Okay?
Good.
Great, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for coming in.
Oh, voting must have been pretty boring before he went to sleep.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a review of the, an update of the site plan for Food Town Plaza. How you doing? Good, thanks. How are you? You can pull a chair up, yeah?
All right, so I have an architect do the assholes.
I should have six or seven copies of that in the folder, yes.
Okay, okay, great.
Our original architects have retired. They designed Food Town after the fire.
Right.
So that's what we basically do. We needed to do it. So I believe there was, no, we basically just wanted, I believe the neighbor was complaining about just a lot of the.
Yeah, we received a lot of complaints.
Lot of complaints, yeah.
These guys?
Yes.
The neighbors and, uh, Meredith.
Meredith, right, yeah.
Meredith, this, this side. Yeah, many they cut, I think, yeah.
Oh, I'm looking at, they, they did a, a cut. They basically took.
Oh, this is a separate?
Yeah.
This is a blow-in?
So I'm looking back here at what we did.
Okay. Now, is the, is this hash line the property line?
Yes. So this is the existing block, block wall for the deliveries.
Which is?
This is behind Food Town.
Here.
Yes, yeah.
So some of this is coming off the property?
Pardon?
Some of this is coming off the property?
Well, this was approved prior when we built Food Town. Yes, it is off the property.
Right.
So where I messed up was I didn't, I didn't understand exactly. I just wanted to correct everything for the, for the neighbors so that they weren't pissed off.
Right.
So I went, I went ahead and I built the block wall so we can, I took, took out the two short storage sheds and, and I, I made a new little dumpster area here to hide all of the other nonsense that was, was back here because it didn't, this dumpster area is only for Food Town. So because there was a, right here, see this line? That's a, that's an eight-inch step that goes onto this parcel back here. So it's very difficult to roll anything with a dumpster or, or like the grease container. It couldn't, it couldn't be on a step because, you know, if they tried to remove it, it would just mess up everything. So I, I made a little dumpster area here just to put everything that's out here and here and cleaned it up really well. All right, we're also gonna paint the building and I'm gonna add planters on every corner, here, 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 with some kind of evergreen bush.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, so this is, these were taken in 2006 and then this is what was sent to us. So as you know, I mean, obviously, it got pretty rough back there. They were, you know, there were additional dumpsters, there were additional, you know, cold storage, there was additional shed, there was additional walls, there was, all sorts of stuff was popping up and it was looking.
Yeah, that's, and this was mainly, this is from the pizzeria. This was all.
It, it did look like they were your most problematic tenant, yeah. In fact, in many ways, I think the Food Town was, seemed like they were, they were in pretty good shape.
Yeah, everybody else is in good shape. I'm, I'm here because of the pizzeria. I've, they, they cause it, I mean, everybody loves them and we're trying to accommodate them and just trying to.
Yeah.
Make everybody happy.
So the challenge is gonna be, for me, is just that we, how do we approve encroachments on a property, right? You don't own. We, we really can't do that.
Right.
I'm not sure why the, why the prior planning board did.
Right.
You know, when folks come to us and say, you know, I wanna show something on my stoop, you know, most of what we have, what we run into is stuff on Main Street.
Right.
Because we see predominantly commercials, so.
Right.
We can't, they can't show anything, they can't do any work there because they don't own it. If they wanna do it, similar to what happened with Silver Spoon, it's first you gotta buy it, right? So if you wanna show an ADA ramp and you wanna show.
If it's available, we'll purchase it.
I think that would make the most sense because I don't see how, and I don't know if that's an option. I don't know if that's something the trustees wanna do. I don't, I'm not the, I'm not the real estate agent here. But I would think that that's the, that's the fastest track to just clean this up.
Okay.
Because I think the setbacks or the lack of setback, you know, is what it is. I don't think, I don't think you can kind of reopen that because it's already been approved. Do you, do you have a set of the stamped approved site plan?
Yeah, it's in that folder.
Okay.
This is what we have. It's hard to read, yeah.
Oh, this? Okay.
That's the previous.
Yeah, this is the file, yeah.
Oh. Alex, if you get a chance, could you have a copy of that made or leave it made? And I'll go to Gray's and have a.
Can I leave this? This is the only one I have.
Yeah.
But if you copy it, I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll go to Gray's and have them make a copy because that would be great.
This would be good to have and we should probably take a little bit, spend a little bit of time on this. And then I think we can, we can reach out to the village board, Jeff, where Jeff can do that as the, as the village clerk. I think it would be interesting to see if they would be willing to sell. I don't know why they'd wanna own it. I don't see any upside to the village owning it, but that's their decision. Our challenge will just be that they're, you know, they're, to, to show these encroachments, we can't really stamp and sign this, you know, because we can't, like you said, this is, and this is shown here, right?
Yeah. That's why I did it.
And it's as-built, right? It's currently built that way? So is there something where it's grandfathered in, is my question?
Well.
Or not? Because once you change it, once you do any.
If it's an, if it's an approval, you know, if it's on an approval, if this is, is this one stamped and signed? Yeah, this is signed by Randy. Oh, that one is too. That's got Taggart's signature.
Two thousand and two, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we should just get a few of these. And then we'll, we'll have to study this. I might be able to look at it tomorrow. Did, in your opinion, did anything, did anything creep further? Because this was already here too. This would.
No, that wasn't here. I, I built that.
But what's this?
No, that's, I was just doodling. I was doodling here.
Oh, so that's not on the original approval?
No.
Oh, and this has been?
No, I.
Do we, we don't have a file copy of it, right?
No.
Okay.
I was just doodling here. I was putting planters and, you know.
Okay, so the red marks, we would just ignore the reds?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a new?
The blue ones too?
New one.
The blue is.
Your doodles or?
My doodles.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, yeah, so we can just, we can just ignore any of the colored annotation?
Yeah.
Can they, Gray's can do it in color or?
I'll find, I think so, should be able to. I'll find, I think so, I'll just be able to.
Or we could just wipe it out?
Or you could make a copy and wipe it out, so.
Okay, okay.
So.
So this is the only, so it looks like. I mean, I don't know about the scale, but I mean, this looks closer, but it's probably a scale issue.
It's, uh, it's pretty much this, this one and this one.
I think it's close to it.
Yeah, should we go a little bit like, uh, you know, that, there, yeah, so that's the same size, pretty much, right?
Yeah.
This looks closer to the, to the lot line than me, from the, uh, dimension. Um, but it could just be the reproduction. But that's true, I mean, I guess, with the exception of this, it looks like this trash enclosure.
I did that like last month.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wasn't supposed to, I know.
Is there anywhere else to put that or no?
No. See, I was, I wanted to put it here, but then you got the staff, you know.
Right here, huh?
That's your other tenant though, right?
Oh.
Yeah.
This is for, Angelina's down here, or no, well, Angelina's is here, right?
Yeah, cause the, the trucks have to.
Come through there, okay.
Alright, so, yeah, I think we probably should. Clean up a copy of this and then compare the two, I mean, just individually and then figure out.
The, the town doesn't have one of these?
What would be the village?
The village, right?
Uh, it doesn't sound like it.
No.
Uh-huh, okay, yeah, we'll just maybe scan it and then I can have somebody photoshop it. You want me to do that? I, I can do that, I can bring it to my printer and have them.
Yeah.
Photoshop all this.
Yeah. They don't even have to be that big, they could be smaller, but.
It can be smaller.
Okay, yeah, alright.
But, yeah, if you could get me a couple of copies.
Can I see those posters again?
Uh, sure.
This is the one.
Yeah.
Of this, yeah.
Yeah, so these sheds are gone. These are all, all this garbage, the dumpster, and these, um, recycling bins are now behind here. So it's pretty much all cleaned up, yeah. And we're gonna repaint it in April.
Okay, great.
It'd be good, I mean, I don't know if we wanna wait until after we reviewed it, but I think indicating the planters.
I can do the planters immediately.
Right? Be a good idea, it's, it, cause you said that you were planning.
Yeah.
Planters.
That's right.
And that's just great screening or?
Yeah, just cause it's such a, you know.
Concrete experience.
Plus, uh, the machine shop guy has nice planters too, like, you know.
Yeah. Okay, um, yeah, why don't we do that, I mean, I think, like I said, we can reach out to the village board and see if they have any interest in selling.
Yeah, that, that would, uh, pretty much.
I don't know if they need to hold a setback, I don't know, I mean, but it doesn't really do much for the village board, I wouldn't really think, I mean, but we can ask them. Because with so many encroachments, it's hard for us to, what's, what's this, this is not, this is not there. What do these, do you know what these indicate?
I have no idea.
It's basically, the, the most problematic are the new ones.
Yeah, these aren't, there's nothing here that.
But this is, but this is new, this doesn't show here.
Right, exactly, that one and this, this one and that one.
Exactly, yeah, it looks like that's the only change.
Everything else looks more or less the same, although these doors.
And the wall.
Swing further.
Do these represent, um, the wheelie bins? To your knowledge?
What's a wheelie bin?
Um, you know, the wheelie bins, the, the low, um, they're not, they're, uh, trash receptacles.
Dumpsters.
The two wheels, yeah, but they're little, they're, you know, they're.
I'll try a lot of them now.
Smaller than a dumpster, you know, the, they. Do we need to go on a site visit? Actually, is that indicated in a situation like this where we're looking at a plan and we're like, oh, what is that, should we go up?
No, any, yeah, anybody should, if you wanna go take a look for yourselves, we, cause we'll, we need to get a copy of this, this is a.
Is that the original?
Yeah, this is the, the side plan, it's been annotated a little bit, so we're gonna, he's gonna clean it up for us because we don't. All we have is a, is a pretty poor scan.
Oh, yeah.
You probably could actually fix, but it'd, it'd be better to go from that, it's just, there's so much, there's so much snow in this.
It's, there's snow much?
Huh?
Snow much?
So much.
Yeah, it's just, you can't really.
Alright.
And then it wasn't, would not require a public, it's not a public hearing thing or anything of that, it's basically just an amended site plan.
I have another, uh, the lady that lives across the street, she called the, the bank and said that the light, um, that is. The security light that they had outside is shining into her window. And, uh, I mean, it's a bank, I, I can't assume, I, they need like pretty good lighting at night.
I would think so, but you, but it could be, could, it shouldn't be going across the street, I don't know why, you know, it's a, that's a, it really should be shining down. Cause I, cause I imagine that their goal is obviously to light the building, to light the door, to see if anybody goes to the door, and if it's at the door. They don't really need to know that somebody's out in the street.
I just wanted to make sure, uh, I don't wanna change the light and then be liable or.
I, I would talk to the bank, I would suspect what the bank wants to do, the bank wants to know whether, if somebody is, what the bank wants to know is that if the police drive by, they will see somebody at the door. Tampering with the door, they don't really need to know that somebody's, you know, twelve feet away, walking in the street. So I think what you're, what.
It's just a normal floodlight that's, and it's angled down.
But it's probably not hooded, right, it's.
Maybe they can put it, yeah, like, put a little.
Yeah, it's like, it's the, the square ones.
It's flush to the.
It's flush, yeah, so it has the pitch already built into it.
Huh.
It's not like a, you know, adjustable light, but like, it's fixed.
So it does sound like it is made to wash.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just.
Uh, I don't know, and we don't really, we don't have a strong lighting code with respect to lumens and all of that, I mean, so. You're not required to do things that aren't in the code.
Okay.
If, to be a good landlord, I think, you know, you obviously, you would, you know, you would, you would want to.
There is actually, um, there is actually a, a section of the code that refers to, that describes, um, how are they, uh. Light, uh, light, it's called light trespass, it refers to light trespass onto private property.
Onto other property, yeah.
And that, you know, thou shalt not light trespass.
Yeah.
So, um, so it is worth noting.
Okay.
Yeah, the question is how much is really spilling off the property, I mean, if it's a downward.
I wasn't sure if they, if she had, uh, mentioned anything to you guys or.
I, have we?
I haven't heard that one.
We haven't, have we heard from anyone directly?
For this property?
Yeah.
Oh my god, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You just filter it for us.
Oh, I see, we, the grand we has heard, but we understand.
So I just wanted to let you.
And you're welcome to have a set of these if you want, if you want some pictures, cause obviously, you know, you're.
So my dad's eighty-eight years old.
Your before, during, and afters.
My dad's eighty-eight now, he always took care of this property.
Yeah.
And he's a, he's a great man, and he knows my dad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, um, you know, he's getting to that age now where, you know, people would call him on things and, you know, doesn't know how to work the answer machine anymore. So it's, he's getting lost in, uh, communication, basically, so.
Okay.
I'm like the.
So you're taking, you're gonna be the point person for the property, okay, great, that's, that's great.
Cause I don't like to hear like a lot of people complain, and, cause this should have been taken care of a long time ago.
Yeah, we can certainly see you got, you, you, most of your problems are, are for one tenant, right, which you're, which you're focused on, which I think is good. We can, so if this gets cleaned up and then, and that comes back to us, we can look at that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I don't imagine you're in a, are you in a hurry to do anything?
No, I'm not.
With respect to, you just wanna set some, you've done everything.
I just wanna take care of, basically, I, I, I kind of need this dumpster to, to facilitate the clutter.
Right.
Otherwise.
Is that where their grease, their, oh no, you moved the grease.
The grease and there's, uh, dirt garbage and one dumpster in here, and everything is, that used to be.
Rolling around.
Yeah, here, you know? Like this stuff, it's not there anymore.
Right.
That's a wheelie bin, those little green and yellow ones.
Yes, these are, these are hidden behind here and now.
Right, and so that's what I was wondering, if those were these, cause I know they have them at, they're using them at the supermarket.
Gotcha.
So that might be what that is.
And, um, these, these are no longer there, and I built a wall.
The little one there.
And that you're pretty sure is on your property, right?
Yes, that's, this is definitely my property.
Okay.
This, this basically matches the rest of them.
Oh, right, it was, uh, there was no wall there, right, and it was just those sheds, those out little.
Kind of makes this wall, it's breaking there.
To hide that.
To hide everything else that's behind there.
Oh, and that, is that the light?
This is the light, yep.
Oh, that goose neck?
No, not the goose neck, the, the flush mount, flush mount.
What about painting a big mural back there?
Oh.
Sorry, I was just, yeah, yeah. Like down in the.
Art's pretty, uh, pretty subjective stuff, yeah.
Or you could have the kids come out and.
Kids helping people to go, kids going over there, you don't need to hire any artists, so the kids, they did, they did the tunnel.
I know.
Pretty cool, I saw, uh. Somebody do Legos, they did a mural of Legos on a building, that's pretty neat.
I, I don't know, I, I mean, that's, that's your facade, so, but I think it could go a long way, or maybe not, as I said, it's subjective.
Yeah, it's just, no good deed, so I think we'd have to, yeah, so I think we, if we bring the, if we get the plans back, we can kind of look at two clean sets.
Okay.
Um, I think it's a little, we can't really do that to shed. And if we could get a few sets of these and a few sets, with this we have, right, that's what's in here.
Okay, so I'll drop these off, uh.
And it would be good if you can do them in the same size, I would just go ahead and do that if you can, the same size as this, just when you're kind of looking at them. It's a lot easier to stare and compare.
Okay.
I'll write an email to the village board then, to just ask if they have interest in selling the strip of property behind Foodtown along Marion. Which is basically just a, you know, it would just be kind of taking a temperature as to whether or not they even wanna retain it.
Okay.
There, um, and I don't know what the answer will be, but, like I said, it's, I don't know, we don't really have the ability. Prior planning boards aside, to like sign up on a site plan that shows things happening on property that isn't yours.
Okay.
Especially permanent installations. But as, you know, as, as Larry was saying, it's, it's, it's really, it's really just the new stuff. Because I don't really think you're. You're doing enough to say you reopen the approvals, right, I mean, I think the approvals are what they are. It looks like you have the stamped one, it, it, when you clean that up and blow it up, we can compare it to this, which is the file copy. Uh, we can look, we can see this well enough to kind of know.
Okay.
Kind of know where the, um, of course, there's a dashed line that's totally snowed out. Uh, but we could probably draw it back in, cause if you could, if you can pick up a couple pieces of it. But it is, it appears to be the same condition. You know, that the, the Foodtown loading dock enclosure came way over. And, um, and then the other stuff looks like it went right up to it.
So the, the, the parcel, would they have to subdivide this, uh, to the street or?
No, I think, no, I think it's just a purchase.
Or is it the whole road, you would purchase the road?
No, you can't purchase a road.
So where?
Uh, it's basically just this, it would be this, I don't know, is the road here or no?
This is the street here.
No, look at this, so.
This strip is here.
So this is, so this is, this is the edge of the road then, right, up here, I'm looking up here.
Where this line is?
Gotcha.
I think so, so, so that's what we're talking, yeah, it's just the piece that brings you to the edge of the road. I don't think the village is required, look, I don't know if there's any utility easements or anything running on there, but they would just transfer to you. You can't extinguish an easement.
Right.
I don't, I doubt there's utility easements in the back, we don't have under, we don't, we don't, we don't have natural gas, and the power's overhead, so. Utility easements really had a lot more to do with, you know, buried power, like Butterfield again, newer construction. So the, it'd be a just question for the village board, and I think that would be a way to kind of clean things up, I, we wouldn't approve any more. Well, I mean, this.
I know that I'm late, guys, but that that you're pointing to there is, that's, um, proposed new construction on the back.
It's proposed new construction that already happened.
Yeah.
To clean up though.
Oh, a wood, I think it's a wood fence.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, so it's not in the images here?
No, that's prior.
So we'll have to look at that, but, um. Look, we appreciate what you're trying to do, let's just, but let's stick, let's not get ahead of the board, but we do appreciate what you're trying to do, because I mean, it was in bad shape and if.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't wanna make anybody upset, I just.
No, 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 if you said what you've done, you've done, I mean, have you looked at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it must look better, you know, and you obviously seem like an honest guy here. So that, you know, we appreciate, but just don't, don't, let's not do any more.
I'm not doing any.
Until we figure out.
Put the planters.
Because, and planters, I mean, well, first of all, you, the planters are then gonna end up on village property too, which I don't think is a big deal, but it's not a permanent installation. This we have to talk about, but I don't, again, I don't, it's, you know, I, I don't wanna say it's not the end of the world, cause it's certainly not, but. It is, we can't really show things on site plans on, you know, going, encroaching onto a neighboring property. Which is fine to talk about for now, and then we can see, we would, we can see what the village's appetite is for, you know, to, for selling the, selling the strip.
Yeah, I mean, I could take it all for now and then try to, hard to purchase the.
But then where are you gonna put that stuff? If it just is gonna sit out in the open, I'd almost prefer that the, that the enclosure just stays up for now.
Until you resolve.
It's not approved, it's, you know, it's, it's not approved, so it's not like it's less approved tomorrow, it's just not approved. So I mean, I don't think it's a, I think, again, and I do appreciate what you're trying to do.
Just don't, don't add anything to that.
I'm not adding nothing.
Don't expand the non-conformity, right? So because there's been something that people have expressed, uh, concern about, um. I don't, I'd feel like people should maybe be notified that we're discussing this, so they can come and at least be.
They are, I mean, the, the, yeah, I mean, the, look, I mean, the, the, the agenda is posted, right? You know, it's, if people have an interest in properties, unfortunately, what they need to do is follow.
Yeah.
The boards, and they just, you know, register for the, you know, the village blast emails, uh, but there's no notification process, I don't think, for like a public hearing or. Which I'm surprised actually.
So you don't think a, a public hearing is indicated in this, in this case?
Because there's no change of use.
Uh, there's no change of use, and it's really just updating a site plan, I mean, I think that. What those neighbor issues are, is not conforming to the site plan, which is an enforcement issue.
Right.
Not a planning board issue.
This is true, however, we are now modifying the site plan in order to make a non-conformity conform. Right, I mean, the, there's sort of like this little chicken and egg thing going on, I mean, not that I think there's anything wrong with it, I'm just, you know, we are modifying the site plan and I wonder if. And, and because it's of interest to the people who live across the street from it, um.
I'd just be concerned to just kind of set the precedent that you gotta have a public hearing for.
Oh, yeah.
You know, for, you know, for, you know, to do a minor site plan, this is really a pretty minor site plan adjustment. Now, if they don't sell you this, then this requires variance, right, how, how tall is the fence? Oh, you're commercial, so they can have a six foot fence, commercial, yeah, so it's not an issue.
Is it a, a fence or, I haven't been back.
It's a, it's a fence, right?
It's a wood fence.
It's a wood board fence.
Yeah, with two, two sets of board.
Eight, yeah.
And, and there's a hardship where that stuff couldn't sit anywhere else, well, the, the pad, this is a pad, right, so this is raised.
That's the hardship, I would, I would gladly put it right here, but.
The truck has to pick it up.
Yeah.
This is for the, the grease.
The grease container and the, and then another dumpster.
Right.
Like a courtyard.
Yeah, and like the wheel off.
Okay. Okay.
So are the wheel off bins going in the gate?
Yep, they're in here.
I mean, there were a few neighbors, I can certainly just shoot them an email to just say, you know, the, the application's before us, you know, we now have an application, and we'll, you know, within the next day or so, we'll have a, the, you know, the, the village approved site plan in two thousand and three, um, and then what the changes are, I mean.
I'm, you know, believe me, I wanna make it beautiful back there, because, uh, we have a lot across the street over here that I, you know, that I plan on putting two nice homes to, eventually.
Will two fit in?
Or whatever.
You're the right place.
Whatever I could fit. Yeah, the corner, yep.
Yeah, this one.
This lot right here, yep.
The post office was almost gonna do something there for about five minutes.
Oh, yeah, remember that? And there were children under a truck.
Yeah, we didn't want the post office to leave, right, you know, they're like critical to our, uh.
I really wanted to talk to you guys about that, and, and I will tell you, it's unfortunate the way that it got played.
Yeah.
Uh, from the politics of it, because what really should've happened is, let's consider a retail post office, right?
Right.
And everybody's like, oh, you gotta have a sorting, or you lose, the, the opposite is true.
Right.
If you leave sorting in an area that is, that is, that, you know, that doesn't really need it.
Right.
You're, you're on the target list to be shut down.
Right.
If you convert immediately to a retail post office, and our retail post office is big enough, it could've fit inside your grocery store.
Right.
Which I'm sure is great for business.
Of course.
Right? You know, and that would've been, but you know, the, you know, the, frankly, the county was really inserting themselves heavily into that pro, you know, into that project. It would've been more productive on the local level to say, because they wanted to keep the sorting, ultimately, the sorting moved away anyway.
Yeah.
Which was a good thing, because, you know, I mean, I, you can imagine, sorting email for Cold Spring for.
Sorting mail.
Mail, very mail.
You know, sorting, yeah, sorting mail for Cold Spring, I mean, and sorting mail down the road for Garrison, if, that's absolutely on the post office's radar.
Right.
Right, it's a very, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a tough margin business. So, but anyway, that's, uh, that, uh, that has left the station, but now, you know, you now, then you go down to, you know, from a three thousand square foot facility down to like eight, nine hundred square feet.
Right.
Cause you just need a counter and some P O boxes, which is great to have inside of a grocery store, but.
Right.
Unfortunately, things didn't go that way.
I don't know.
Sunny.
But, it's self-bustling little shopping center.
Yeah, it's very busy, yeah.
Very, very busy.
Yeah.
Was there earlier today?
Yeah.
But you don't, you don't go behind, we walk along here most of the time.
Oh, yeah, I do walk down that way.
And notice the.
No, this is gonna be beautiful from now on.
It's a, it's a good example for our board too, as to why, uh, why shared parking does not work. Right? You know, smart parking, when you say a twenty percent reduction in parking, that works if one ends a nightclub and, you know, one ends a grocery store.
Right.
Right? You know, you close one, open the other one, but when everything's pretty much a nine to five, it's nine to nine, it's business. Smart parking, smart parking is not smart, it just doesn't, uh, you end up with not enough parking. But it's, uh, but obviously, you, you know, you guys are trying to get back in business after the fire. So, yeah, so let's just do that, and then we can regroup at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I'll send an email out to the people that were sending us pictures, there's only like three or four people. Just to let them know.
We're gonna be on for the next, for next month, or in two weeks?
About two weeks is fine, yeah, if you want to go back, yeah.
Alright, so I'll, I'll make copies of that.
Cause then we can get a temperature from village board by then, we can figure out whether or not we're sending, you know, whether or not Greg, uh, whether or not Jeff is sending you for variances, to the Z B A, or whether or not you're gonna hold off and, and look at purchasing the parcel, and that, well, you're still gonna need a variance, cause I don't think you're gonna, you're gonna have, well, I don't know, is that true?
You need a setback for a, for a fence?
Oh, good point, it's just a fence.
Yeah.
That should be fine.
Yeah.
That's a good point, that's not a permanent structure, it's a fence, it's not part of the building. That's probably fine, I'll take, I'll take a look at the code, I think it's probably fine. And then we, and then you probably should establish escrow, a thousand dollar check for it.
Okay.
Okay, good, good. Um, well, John, at the, at least, well, just at the hearing, we don't need to, oh no, there's not gonna be a hearing. Uh, well, we might, we might need his opinion on something, but yeah, that's true, I don't really think we need to meet in meetings, um, I think it's pretty straightforward. Unless, of course, it goes into a purchase of the, of the strip in the back, and that would be your preference, is that correct? Just to kind of clean it up?
Yes. Yeah.
And not have to.
Use a little plan too, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and then we could, then we could get everything documented, and get it, you know, and then you can, you know, in the spring, start to really scrub and paint and.
Yeah.
You know, but like I said, I, you know, it's hold off on anything else, I do appreciate what you're trying to do, cause obviously, I know the, um, the building is, you know, it can be, it can get pretty, uh.
Yeah, if you're not, if you don't, we'll do whatever, you don't have to keep an eye on it, so.
Yeah, alright, very good, thank you so much for coming again.
Take care.
Alright, so good job, thanks, have a good night.
Bye bye, thanks.
Okay, um. Do we have anything else?
So, those photos people sent in is mainly for abilities, not for occupying space.
No, no, it's more, it's, no, no, it's not just, it's not just aesthetics, I mean, the, there's, this is, this pretty much represents the approved site plan, this condition right here in two thousand and six.
Yeah.
Right? Then what started happening was this, so in front of, in front of these block walls, there's a, there's several dumpsters, there's a rolling grease container, grease containers are.
That's from the.
Pretty much always leak.
Yeah.
Right, then you got, you got a bunch of wood pallets stacked up, then you got a bunch of just rubble, there's another dumpster, behind two sheds, you said you got rid of the sheds?
Yeah, I think you said that.
I thought one of them was refrigeration though, for Food Town.
I think that's part of what's on the plan that he's asking for, right, is the, enclosing the refrigeration, putting in the wood, a roof.
Oh, okay.
That's mainly the piece of.
Oh, is that what was on the?
I think that's what's on the refrig.
Yeah, so it's just, there's a, there's, it's, it's far more than aesthetics, I mean, it's pretty rough looking, um, and, what the hell was that? A water tank?
People's.
A hot water tank?
Hot water.
No, it's board with some stuff on it.
No, that's a hot.
Oh, that one, no.
Um, yeah, so it was, I'll just shoot them an email, just say it's in front of us, if you wanna, you know, come and look. But really, what we, they're, what they're showing us is really an enforcement issue, right?
Yeah.
Basically say, you know, there's a site plan on file, the code enforcement, um, it needs to enforce the code, to the, to the approved site plan, right, to the filed site plan, so, that obviously keeps everybody from, uh, from getting upset. Cause then you can at least look at the approved site plan and go, well, it's approved, right, you know, this thing that juts out for Food Town's approved, it was signed off by the prior planning board, um, when Randy Taggart was chair, back in two thousand and three, so, we can't reopen that, you know, to the extent that they touch it, we can reopen it. But it's, it's good that I think that the, that the owner now wants to see if he can look at that, I don't know if they ever talked about purchasing that strip, or why they decided to encroach without selling, although I don't think, we didn't sell before, right, I don't, I don't even remember that much years ago. I don't even remember talk of it, I think, well, even when I was on the board, I don't remember selling stoops, I remember people talking about, not really knowing they didn't own the property in front of theirs, and, you know, on Main Street and.
I think that's the issue, there was one, when we just moved in first, there was once, we were the public sitting there, and somebody said, no, you cannot use that, and somebody said, why not? Uh, we're discussing about a shop or somebody along the main street here, and then they said, because that belongs to the village.
Right.
And the guy said, huh?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think, I think back then, it was really more just talk, it's only been recently, within the last maybe two to three years, that there's been a little bit of activity on selling, you know, and they had, they came up with, you know, a price per square foot or whatever.
It's mostly been on Main Street, it's been these little stoop areas on.
Yeah, and then we had two four, no, no, two fourteen, one fourteen Main, is that right? What is going on with that, with the vignessa of the old yoga studio?
Because.
Lower.
Which one, one fourteen where?
No, all the way down, on Lower Main.
Oh.
Oh, that, is that stopped?
Yeah, did it start?
Oh, fifteen?
Did we permit, we approved it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifteen Main Street?
Is it fifteen, yeah.
It's in progress, I mean, they.
Lower Bergman?
Yeah.
The, the, well, she said there's some construction going on, we went.
There is construction going on.
We went through there one day, and then the back was really far, I mean, it's, it's a huge place, and they were building the roof and.
Oh, they were doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I just.
It was, uh, it was some, there, there's things going on, yeah.
Okay.
They're putting in the bathtub.
Okay, we hooked in the windows, we couldn't get in, but you could see the back.
I remember that was a fun meeting.
Yeah.
I heard a, a lot about Lower Main.
Oh, is that right, we had, we had neighbors come and talk to us and tell us things about.
Okay, so we have no public, so I guess there's not public comment, uh, board, anybody have any board business?
Uh, I, I completed an hour and a half course online.
Okay, great, and then you sent it to Jeff?
And there's, there is one piece of paper I printed out I can give to you.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there was one question I, I answered wrong twice, it shows how much I totally did not agree with. Uh, and then, uh, one question is, uh, they have a conference at Lake George, but that doesn't, um, doesn't seem to count as study hours.
It doesn't? The planning thing, it's in Lake George?
That should.
I would think it would.
I'd be hard-pressed to think it, would be more than enough for, that probably was more for one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, because they have a.
When is that, it's in, it's in spring, right?
In April. Yeah, in April, I have, you, you gave me the, the, um.
Oh, was it that for sure?
Yeah, in that for sure, they have the application forms and stuff, you can go in just for the, uh, workshops and stuff. But, uh, I looked at it, and then, you know, I wasn't certain if that is counted as a study hours. And then another thing was, I looked online, uh, online courses, right now only available for one hour and a half. And then they had the same thing, they said, oh, here's the book, I go through it, it's exactly the same thing as they go through online, it's not much. And then I'll, I'll continue looking to see if they offer any new courses, otherwise I'll check at.
Yeah, and you get to see that on the board, and then when you get your completion certificate, send it to Jeff, cause he, Jeff records that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll submit to you.[1653.34]